Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Hi.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Present.
Councilmember Garrel will be joining us momentarily. Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
Happy New Year to everyone and welcome. Let us begin with the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. And for that, I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Katie Valenzuela.
Thank you. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains, Miwok, Putwa and Windtoon peoples, and the people of the Wilt and Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. And now, please salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, free, democratic, and sovereign.
Well, we are going to get to Councilmember Laloie in a very happy celebration in just a moment. But before we do that, I want to again wish everyone a happy new year. I want to welcome our new city council colleagues who were sworn in there, it seemed like a long time ago, in the middle of December, but this is our first official meeting. And I can tell you to a person among the new members, they have been busy at work since the day they got sworn in. And in part for the reasons I want to speak about just for a moment before I turn it over to Councilmember Laloie. And it is really just an expression of gratitude for our community, but especially for our city staff. It has been quite a ride for our community these past 10 days. And the dedication, hard work, and flexibility of our city staff to deal with this emergency has been, as usual, outstanding. They have been working 12-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, many of them since New Year's Eve. Last night, we sheltered 65 people in our city respite centers. It's a start, but between the city and the county, working together, we need to continue to up those numbers. Our staff has cleared hundreds of trees and clogged storm drains. Over the last three days, they received 426 calls about trees. That's about as many calls as they usually get in a month. And the reason is pretty obvious. It has been quite a sight to see. On New Year's Eve alone, the city cleared more than 3,600 storm drains. I know I've visited, and I know many of my colleagues have visited Department Operations at the South Corp Yard, and I just must say, I was so impressed by the system our city has created to keep us safe. We are in, obviously, the era of technology where practically every foot of the city can be seen in an appropriate way, where there is anybody who, where there is any breakdown or where there is any problem, one part of the city family can respond. Looked at that giant, Lisa Kaplan and I were out there yesterday to see the giant video monitor where they make sure that the 147 sump pumps that surround the city and keep us dry are all pumping out water the way they should be and can detect in a minute where there has been a problem. The flood control system is so easy to take for granted, but the flood control system, not just in our city, but in our county and in our region, this is 30 years of work that has led to, yes, it's only 100-year flood protection, but we see high rivers, but we don't see any flooding. And that's the result of hundreds of millions of dollars versus of investment, dedication, and commitment. It's really important to say that two unsheltered people lost their lives during this storm. Their lives were precious. Every life is precious. When I look at weather incidents that occur throughout the country and the natural disasters that other communities face, I think it's fortunate that more people have not been hurt and that more lives were not lost in the storms we've been experiencing since New Year's Eve. And I place some of that credit on how well-prepared our city is for a weather event like this. So utilities, public works, the Department of Community Response, YPSI, fire, police, the Office of Emergency Management, the City Manager's Office, my council colleagues and your staffs, all of you deserve a real thanks for helping the people of Sacramento through this. And in the next couple of weeks, when many of our frontline workers have had a chance to get some sleep and some rest, of course, we're not through the end of this yet, we'll schedule a special presentation to thank them publicly. Just want to say thank you and please that people of Sacramento continue to stay safe. All right. Let's move on to the celebration of something very, very special, and that is another championship for the city of Sacramento. I turn it over to Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. What a great day, and it's an absolute honor to have the football champions of 2022 here amongst us, the Grant Pacers Football Team. I can't say enough about this group of young men. I commend you and admire you on your dedication, discipline, and let me tell you something, I was in that game. When it was kind of going towards...
You were in the game?
Well, I was on the sideline. I was trying to be a cheerleader. It was a nail-biting game. But this group that's sitting here, I learned a lot from them, and that is regardless of how much time is left on the clock, you never give up. And that's exactly what happened. I was nervous. I was like, oh, my God, they scored, we're done. Next thing I know, I look at the team, and I see the team is so calm because they still had a chance to get that ball back. So I learned something that night, and that is you don't give up till you hear that whistle. So congratulations on that.[486.52][486.52](applause) I truly want to also congratulate each one of you for your commitment, for the sacrifice that you made, for the time that you spent on those practice days. I'm pretty sure the coaching staff wasn't just sitting on the sideline where you guys are practicing and giving you cold water to make sure you're hydrated. I'm pretty sure they worked too hard. So really, congratulations to your commitments. It's truly admirable. I also want to thank the coaching staff, which I think all of you players will acknowledge that without the leadership of the coaches, we wouldn't be here tonight. If I can have the coaches stand up, I would greatly appreciate it.[542.29][542.29](applause) I want to thank every single one of you for making the commitment for these young men and truly get them ready for their next chapter of their lives, which is going to be a lot more of commitment, sacrifice, and being focused. I want to, there's so many people that we got to thank, right? I want to thank all the parents that gave you the rights to the game, came to the away games, to practices, running late grabbing you and running to the practice. So make sure when you go home today, you give those individuals that were involved in this journey a big hug and give them a big thank you because without them, obviously, you wouldn't be here today. So we got to take that into acknowledgement. I want to thank Principal Darius Hansen for Grant High School. Is, was he able to make it today? Well, I've had the pleasure of meeting the principal and solid individual and so committed to that school that is wonderful. I also want to say a big thank you to Superintendent Dr. Martinez and his staff for really paying so much attention to Twin River School District as a whole and, in particular, Grant High School with the new field, and now we're bringing a championship home. That's great. Gentlemen, you've made the city proud. You've made the district proud. You made El Paso Heights proud. So I want to thank you for bringing us and putting us at a level that's up here that we can walk around because of your hard work and commitment with our heads up and going, yes, we did it. So congratulations on that. As I'm sitting here and looking at the future, that's what you are. You are the future, and you've proven it to yourself that you can accomplish anything you want. Because let me tell you something, winning a championship game, that's not an easy task. Going in those last seconds where everybody's sitting down going, did we just lose this game? And then all of a sudden, you guys walk on that field, cool as a butter and going, we got this game. And when I saw how emotional the coaching staff got, the players, it was just, I wish, it was such a great feeling. So thank you so much for allowing that. I also want to thank this staff even more because during the halftime, I did go to the visitor's side. I knew the size was fairly small, but I just kind of walked there and kind of introduced myself to see how everybody's doing. And it's amazing how much they thanked the staff at Grant High School, how you guys made every parent feel so comfortable coming to our neighborhood and even though they lost, unfortunately, or actually fortunately, but we made them feel very comfortable. It was, we were classy. We were class act from the time the game started to the last minute. And I again want to thank you on that. So on behalf of the entire city, especially District 2 and El Paso Heights, I want to congratulate you all and present Coach with a resolution to Grant High School Football If you guys want to join all of us, I mean, we can take that semi circle.
Why don't all the guys from the team let's take a picture?
Mayor, mayor.
They're much bigger than we are, so we will follow.
Do they want to feed anything?
Come on, let me, let me open this. Look, look. I would like to... Brother, it works. Here we go. Ready, one, two, three. Pacers! Congratulations. Great job. I just want to, just for our Pacer players, I want to also make sure Councilmember Jennings, I'm going to turn the mic to one of our heroes and ex-NFL superstar, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Councilmember Laloie. You've done a great job of letting us know how great this team is, and I want us to give them another big round of applause if we will.[973.93][973.93](applause) As you were talking, I wrote down players, students, families, parents, coaches, aunts, uncles, fans, supporters, everybody. Make sure that you acknowledge them at some point in time because they were a part of this journey to a championship. And the last thing I have on here is what I know I've seen in everything that you've done, you exhibited the heart of a champion. And what the heart of a champion means to me is the ability to come together, knowing what it is that you want and being able to take it. And that's exactly what you did. And I'm so proud of you because not only have you made yourself proud, your families proud, your school proud, you've made all of us proud. I mean, if we could put on the Grant uniform tomorrow, we'd be out there playing with you.[1035.33][1035.33](laughter) Not possible, but we would. And so, you know, you've exhibited the heart of a champion. You've won a championship, something that nobody can ever take from you. This is something you will have for the rest of your life. One of your coaches let me take pictures of three of his eight rings. He put his hands together so I could take a picture of it because I just wanted to have it for my own sake of being able to see what a high school championship looks like, something I never achieved. But you have, and no one can ever take that from you. Now set your goals higher for a national championship like you got a chance to see on television this past weekend, and then set your goals even higher for a Super Bowl championship. So that you can say you're one of a few in this country that has a high school championship, a national championship, and a Super Bowl championship. Set your goals high. And guess what? When you set your goals, you can make it happen because you just proved with your championship at the high school level. So again, congratulations.[1105.08][1105.08](applause)
One additional note. Do we have Alani Noah? Not here? Well, I'm very excited, I just found this out, to announce that Senior Alani Noah has signed a letter of intent to play for USC.
All right now, all right.
So, you know, Grant Pacers, you guys go long ways. And I think, I don't know if I told you this or not, but when I was campaigning and I was walking down El Paso Heights, Strawberry Manors, literally, not once, not twice, not three times, not four times, at least 10, 15, maybe even 20 times, when I knocked on a door, they opened the door, I introduced myself, I did my whole, hey, this is what I want to do for the community. The first question they asked me was, did you graduate from Grant? I said, no. They said, thank you very much, and they just shut the door.[1175.13][1175.13](laughter) And I'm not exaggerating, they just shut the door. So going with what my colleague stated, Councilmember Jennings, this is a history for you. This is history for you guys. You guys have accomplished something that is going to stay with you till years and years to come.
Your entire life.
Please, the only advice I can give you is the same discipline that you use for your football practices, the same commitment that you gave to football and the wonderful coaching staff that you have, make that same commitment to your everyday life. In order to become a champion, you have to make sacrifices. Nobody goes from point A to point B overnight. Remember all the days that you practiced after school. If you didn't practice good enough, I'm pretty sure Coach dragged you out there Sunday morning and said, let's do some more practice. So again, congratulations, and thank you so much for joining us today.
Alani, congratulations. As a UCLA alumni, it's a pretty good thing that you go.[1246.83][1246.83](laughter) We're very proud of you.[1251.13][1251.13](applause) Way to go, Grant. Thank you for starting us off on a good note, Councilmember Laloie. We are really proud of you. Pacers for Life, Grant High School is a very special place in our community with a rich history and tradition, and you just, just to be amongst you out at the ballgames and in the community, it's a very special and important part of our city. And so carry forward, all right, and always care about Sacramento. Thank you, guys, and thank you to the coaches. Let us, let us move on to our consent cal... You're welcome to stay, by the way.[1293.63][1293.63](laughter) This is part of the civic education here. You can also, you're welcome to, you're welcome to head out, it's okay, whatever you want, no worries.[1303.92][1303.92](background noise) Wait just a second.[1316.92][1316.92](background noise) Next week, because we're going to have a full, we're going to have a full of our fullers. In fact, I was going to say that, just that we're going to have a full.[1335.24][1335.24](background noise)
Is it deferred? Not important. But what's, what's...
He had covered mostly everything I was going to say.
Okay, I'll correct my minutes, but you don't need to read it to the record.
How to add value to what he said. I appreciate you. Love you, encouragement.
And we're going to change the way we list that next week, so it'll be, it'll be District and then Representative.
Contact you or your office.
I know, it's confusing, huh?[1376.92][1376.92](laughter)
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. But we're right next to each other, so always come to me and find out.
Okay, we're ready? Okay, let's get back to the consent calendar here. Now, the clerk has some things to read into the record, but let me just start by asking, are there any items that members would like to have voted on separately to discuss the way we accommodate anything? Councilmember Kaplan?
I have a...
No, 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 you have to wait until...
Not me, but...
You have to wait until we call you, okay? If you signed up, you can sign up for... Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item 2, the minutes, from consent calendar so they can be voted on separately. Just my personal belief that it's inappropriate for me to approve minutes before I was elected a city council member.
Very good catch.
Even though, except for the December 13 5:00 p.m. meeting, I don't feel comfortable voting on minutes.
No, that's fine. The way we do it is, yeah, will be voted on separately, just at your request. That's absolutely fine. Thank you. Okay, any other member? Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I'm not going to pull item, but just wanted to make a comment on item 20.
A comment on item 20? Okay. Madam Clerk, why don't you read into the record what you need to read?
Thank you, Mayor. On item number four, it's a pass for publication, and that item will come back for consideration at a future date, but not on January 24, 2023. Then on item 30, the board and commission appointments, I'd like to add to the recommendation, appointment to the Sacramento Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Commission, Ronell Anderson to seat E. The staff report was correct, but that name was omitted from the recommendation on the agenda.
Okay. That is very good. We will add those things. So Councilmember Vang, why don't you speak on item 20, and then we'll hear from the public and take a motion on the consent calendar separating out item two.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Megan Van Voron, our Director of Convention and Cultural Services, and really our partners from the Florin Road Partnership, just really for their heart and hustle on this grant. This is such a great opportunity, really to center our local artists, Shona McDaniels from the Sojourner Truth Museum, and especially our youth in South Sacramento. We know that the arts and placemaking is really important. It's an important tool to revitalize our neighborhoods, to revitalize our business corridor, and really wanted just to center this grant because I think it's such an incredible opportunity for our city. It's also about strengthening cultural connections and really building communities with one another. The most exciting part about this grant that I just wanted to share is that this grant will actually also provide opportunities for our Luther Burbank High School students to lead a public outreach campaign. So really excited for that. And, you know, this is back to basic, right? Beautification of our streets, our neighborhoods, and really just wanted to thank Megan, Florin Road Partnership, and everyone involved to ensure that the city received this grant. And so really just wanted to thank staff for their hard work on this grant. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. All right, we do have, is it Ms. Boyce? Is that...
Barbara Boyce.
Barbara Boyce. So you've signed up for items not on the agenda, which comes after the agenda. This is the consent calendar, so we will call on you when, at the appropriate time in the meeting, okay? Thank you so much. We do have one member of the public who wants to testify on the consent calendar.
I have one member online and two, two online and one in chambers, Lambert Davis, then Daniel Savala, then Keon Bliss.
Mr. Davis, Happy New Year.
Welcome to the new members. Really a sight for sore eyes to see what I see up there as far as the changes. I'm here to talk about number 17, the auditor's report, and number 21. All I need them to do is to send me a copy of that because it's so small. I'm talking about the graphs because I study it very heavily. And then, since I have a minute and 52 seconds, I want to say that whoever was instrumental in getting these teenagers here and recognizing them, because I'm a 1976 alumni, and you can best believe I came down here just to see this because it's historical. It also shows you that if you're from an underserved community and you can get the support, even though they didn't really have the support, they had the support from the community. And therefore, what they accomplished was incredible. It literally, if you've never played sports, it's difficult to win a game. And if you watch the Kings, you can see it's very difficult to win a championship. Sacramento Republic, you promote them heavily, but I don't think they've won it all yet. It's just difficult to do it. And another thing is, I think you should go beyond this photo op tonight because these are teenagers. They need to get summer jobs. That should be part of it, too. And don't let it die with that. Let them go see the Sacramento Kings. They won a championship there at Grant last year. And the 49ers, why can't they go see the 49ers? I mean, they should be treated tremendous. It's fine to have what you had today, that's great. And they love our organization, which is to the bay and back cheesecakes. They're tremendous fans of ours. And so I wanted to come down and say that welcome to the new members, and you'll be hearing and seeing a lot of me. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daniel Savala.
Good evening. Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor and City Council. This is Daniel Savala, the Executive Director of the El Paso Boulevard Partnership. I'm calling in tonight in regards to item 18, the city auditor's report on cannabis, and more importantly, the finding number two. Inspection process could be better, could be improved with, I guess, with the more uniform checklist. I just find that really disturbing for places like El Paso Boulevard and North Sacramento as a whole. When the city of Sacramento was crafting the ordinance, business owners along El Paso Boulevard and even neighbors like myself worked really hard with app... Boulevard and even neighbors like myself worked really hard with applicants to craft security plans, odor mitigation plans. And when I'm reading through the auditor's report, the report reads a lot about some of the basic compliance issues with the BOP. But of the few times that I've sent in complaints about smell in the neighborhood near other businesses, nothing seems to be able to be done about it, because there is no uniform standard, I'm assuming, to how to tell if something smells or not. And that's a shame, because I looked at and I reviewed several odor control plans, and so my recommendation is that there needs to be a uniform standard of how you audit one facility's odor mitigation plan. For example, if their odor control plan says they have X amount of blowers or carbon scrubbers or what you have them, that they should be there, and that there should be a maintenance log, and that should, everything that they said in their application, that everything they committed to doing is still there. And also, there's just basic lack of some of the basic conditions that came with some of the facilities. I've got facilities here on Del Paso Boulevard that yet to do basic things like sidewalks and window repairs that were part of the conditions in their CUPs. So, that being said, I just wanted to highlight those things and hope that city staff will take these things into consideration, and we can do better as we move forward, because we certainly appreciate our cannabis operators here in Del Paso Boulevard, and we want everyone to do well.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Keon Bliss, and Mr. Bliss is the final speaker on the consent calendar.
Happy New Year, City Council. I am calling in regarding consent calendar, item 26, just as an individual consent citizen. Just to note and both appreciate the upcoming appointments that are being made tonight via the consent calendar, which is to the commission. And just to highlight a problem that the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission has named as far back as 2020, which is that current city code, section 2.1010.090, requires that a quorum of no less than six police review commission members are required to conduct business without a contingency for vacancies. And we were supposed to, we were originally scheduled to have a meeting this January, this coming Monday, and unfortunately, due to the number of vacancies that, that are recurring, six, which are right now, and we are an 11-member body, we were not able to hold our meeting, which is something that we had raised concerns about in one of our recommendations back as far back as 2020. So I appreciate the upcoming appointments that is being made to our commission, and want to encourage our new council members, I hope to be able to meet with you all here in the coming months and discuss the work that we have on, on our agenda. But I also want to raise, too, for the city council as a whole, to really look at city code section, at the city code that requires certain commissions to have a specific number. We had originally recommended that this language be changed to determining a quorum of commission members to be a majority of members serving on the commission in the event of any vacancy or vacancies such as this. And to, by my count, there are currently three commissions, the Sacramento Active Transportation Commission and the Sacramento Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission that also has.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll change that. We're having technical difficulties with the timer.
Keeps you awake?
Thank you. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
For sure. Okay. I'll take a motion on the consent calendar for items one through 30, with the exception of item two. So moved? Seconded? All in favor, please say aye.
We do have to do a roll call, because we have someone remote.
We do, a roll call. Go, go. Okay.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Telemontes?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes. Now, item two, and again, Councilmember Kaplan indicated she's gonna abstain, because she wasn't here, and may, I don't know how the other members. I think we can get it passed without the other new members. Okay? Moved by Councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Laloie.
Councilmember Gata moved it, and then Valenzuela second?
Sorry, blew that one. Okay, didn't hear it.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Councilmember Kaplan?
Abstained.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Telemontes?
Abstained.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Abstained.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Barely passed. Okay, that's the consent calendar. Let's go to the public hearings. Item 31, the ARPA.
Councilmember Vang have comments on 20?
She already did.
Yeah, I did already.
She already did.
I did.
Yep. Item 31, welcome.
Happy New Year, and welcome to the new council members. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the City Council. Matt Ironman, your Parking Services Manager. I'm accompanied tonight by Stacy Hovermail with the Parking Services Division, Valerie Mamoni, and Leslie Fritsch with the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. On June 21 of 2022, the City Council passed a resolution adopting a portion of the Alfresco Dining Program. The proposed fee structure and details of the grant program were deferred so staff could better understand the business community's interest in the outdoor dining program and identify what the true recovery cost would be. We are here tonight to finalize the Alfresco Dining Program, and we are asking for your support to approve the implementation of the new fee schedule for the Alfresco Dining Program and approve the Alfresco Dining Program, Grant Program. The benefits for restaurants is increased dining area means greater capacity with the dining experience on display for passerby's. For customers, thoughtful, designed, and well-built Alfresco patios enhance the dining experience. For communities permitted, Alfresco patios make for safer and more pedestrian-friendly streets. To break down the details of this request, we have prepared a short presentation. After the presentation, staff will be able to answer questions that you may have.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. My name is Stacy Hovermail, I'm with the Parking Services Division, and I'm here to share an overview of our new Alfresco Dining Program and how we got to where we are today. In April of 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city approved the temporary allowance of outdoor dining. From June of 2021 to July of 2022, the city engaged hundreds of internal and external stakeholders to develop the Alfresco Dining Program. We also extended the temporary allowance of outdoor dining through June of 2023. On July 1 of 2022, the Alfresco Dining Program was formally established. All businesses participating in the temporary allowance of outdoor dining were required to submit an initial interest form by September 30 of 2022. There were a total of 108 businesses participating in the temporary allowance of outdoor dining. Fifty-five of those businesses have submitted interest forms stating that they'd like to participate in the new program. Thirty-five businesses are no longer interested in having extended outdoor dining patios. Nine businesses have permanently closed, and nine businesses failed to respond. To determine the fees for the program, we first need to understand the costs. With 69 businesses already interested in the Alfresco Dining Program, we estimate that 100 businesses will be participating in the program each year. Our goal is to hire an administrative analyst to manage all aspects of the program, and the fully burdened cost is estimated to be $120,000 per year. Unlike other cities that are charging increased per-square-footage fees, we plan to recover administrative revenue with a flat monthly fee. We also wanted to look at the on-street parking revenue and make sure that that would be recovered throughout the central city. We use pre-pandemic parking meter revenue to determine the average annual revenue per parking space. Based on the cost from the previous slide, we're proposing the following fee schedule. All patios, not including tables and chairs, will pay $100 per month. Large patios over 200 square feet will pay an additional $100 per month. Any patio that occupies an on-street parking space within the central city will pay $150 per month per parking space. Tables and chairs only would be $25 per month, and existing sidewalk café permit holders will pay $25 per month. To provide a better understanding of how much the businesses will be paying, we wanted to estimate the fees using the renderings from our pre-designed patio options. Here's a sidewalk or parkway patio, and the fee would be $100 per month. Here's a parking patio, or patio within the on-street parking space. The fee for this would be $100 per month plus $150 per month per parking space. This is one of our larger patio options that's located within the sidewalk and parkway and provides an ADA walkway within the on-street parking. The fee for this patio would be $200 per month and $150 per month per parking space. Here's a combination patio located within the parkway and the on-street parking. The fee for this patio would be $200 per month and $150 per month per parking space. The last layout is simply tables and chairs. We wanted to provide businesses with the quick and inexpensive patio option at a reduced rate of $25 a month for two tables and chairs. Businesses may choose to add additional tables for $20 per table per month. So everything we've presented so far has been related to patios within the public right-of-way, but we wanted to provide an update on behalf of the Community Development Department as it relates to outdoor dining on private property, such as within private parking lots. So, private property initial interest form is now available on the city's Alfresco webpage, where businesses can go online, design a patio, and submit an interest form to CDD staff. Community Developments, Department staff will direct interested businesses to a formal building permit application process, and we've listed the required materials that businesses would need to provide during that application process. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Valerie Mamoni to talk about the Alfresco Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. Happy New Year. I'm Valerie Mamoni, and I'm a project manager with the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. I was also the project manager on the temporary. Do you, do I have to leave my mask on?
If the mask makes it hard.
Okay. I'll try and use my Italian strong voice here, speak like my mom. I was also the project manager on the temporary Alfresco Program, for those of you that weren't here, where we provided $3,000 grants for the temporary outdoor dining. And so now we're looking to implement a similar program to all of those businesses that are looking to convert, convert their temporary dining to permanent, or any business that is looking to add on to their dining that did not participate before. So we're, we have created now a permanent grant program to assist them. But before I go into how we got to this grant structure, I wanted to talk to how we came up with this dollar amount. And as Stacy mentioned, there were those intake forms, and on those intake forms, they had a question about their budget. And their budget asked specifically about their financial contribution and how they would get to completing their project, and if there was any kind of a gap. And we used those dollars to come up with some estimates and to figure out then what would be meaningful to help them complete their project. And that's how we came up with this tiered approach. And so for this grant, we are looking to provide for parklets and parkways up to $20,000, and for the sidewalk cafes with tables and chairs, up to $5,000, and up to $10,000 when they include a railing, which would include a liquor license at times. And then anytime there's a private parking surface, or surface lot, it's a $20,000 grant that would be provided, which would include also funding for the design. This is a reimbursable grant, and so there are a list of eligible expenses. This is not an inclusive list right here, but I will go over some of the items. And they include supplies and materials similar to the temporary list, such as tables, chairs, benches, heaters, so forth. Also, construction materials, anything electrical, lumber, concrete, so forth. Also, design services, engineering, architectural, and signage. And then labor, such as construction, which is not included on the temporary, but is this time, and then contractor fees. Also, any of the city fees will be also reimbursable. Next steps for the grant program implementation is we will continue our collaboration for outreach with the Sacramento Chambers, P-Bids, and the IEDC. We also will distribute informational sheets in multiple language. We also have personal interpreters available for the application assistance and submission. We do have a platform where they will be going on for the application, but we do have right now four interpreters will be personally available to go through the application process with the applicants. And then the Alfresco Dining Grant will be open starting tomorrow, the 11th, and it'll be available through June 30. And now I can hand it over back to Matt.
So we want to leave you with two important dates. If this item is approved tonight, the temporary allowance of outdoor dining will continue until June 30, 2023. And the Alfresco outdoor dining fees will begin on July 1, 2023. In closing, we're asking for your support to move forward with approving staff recommendations to implement a new fee schedule for the Alfresco Dining Program and approve the Alfresco Dining Grant Program. Thank you for your time this evening. Staff is available to answer your questions.
All right, do we, I know Councilmember Valenzuela is first in the queue. Do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have three speakers online to make comments.
Let's hear from the public, then we'll turn it to the council.
First is Annie Keys.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. This is Annie Keys calling in on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership and the 66 blocks we represent within the urban core. I'm calling in to express Downtown Partnership's strong support for the Alfresco Dining Grant Program and its updated fee schedule, demonstrating a commitment to the permanency of outdoor dining patios and long-term vibrancy of Sacramento. Outdoor dining experiences are an instrumental driver for the economic vitality of many of our local dining venues, many of which relied on these temporary patios to stay in business during the pandemic. The Downtown Partnership applauds the collaborative efforts set forth by city staff to develop a program which encourages well-managed Alfresco dining and creates a streamlined and sustainable pathway for continued business participation. The Downtown Partnership stands ready as a partner to support the implementation of this grant program. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jack Blatner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber, representing over 600 businesses in the area. Like the Downtown Partnership, we are happy to support today's item on the Alfresco Dining Grant Program and the corresponding fee schedule. In particular, we'd like to thank the city's work on adjusting the fee schedules to become much more reasonable and less burdensome on local businesses than they had been. Sacramento restaurants have already been making creative and beautiful use of outdoor space, and so we are all excited that more restaurants will be able to take advantage of this program for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jamison Parker is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Jamison Parker, Midtown Association. Thanks for allowing me the time to speak this evening. I just want to start by thanking Matt, Stacy, and their continued commitment to see the implementation of the Alfresco Program. I also want to express our appreciation towards Leslie Fritsch and Valerie with the Economic Development Department for developing a grant program that really complements the effort of the Parking Department. As many of you know, Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district that represents over 1,200 properties within the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. We're calling in this evening to voice our support for the permanent Alfresco Dining Program and the supportive grant funds that will be made available for the construction of these permanent patios. As we all know, restaurants are a pivotal part of what makes Midtown the place that it is today. As a whole, the restaurant industry makes up approximately 55% of the sales tax generated in Midtown. They were also one of the most impacted industries during the pandemic. When the temporary program was launched in April and then in June of 2020, I don't think anyone could have anticipated that we would have seen the lasting impact that it has had. These outdoor expansions were a lifeline for businesses struggling to endure through the uncertainties of closure, and as they opened, quickly became a natural part of our landscape. When the city passed this permanent Alfresco Program in last June, we had asked that the city outline a clear path for restaurants to be supported with grant funds to construct these patios, have a streamlined and simple process for approving designs and plans, and that the city be collaborative and responsive. and that the city be collaborative and responsive to the needs of the community. We believe what is brought forward before you this evening meets all of these key questions that we had raised in June and are excited to see the program continue to evolve. We just ask that the City Council approve this item before you this evening. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, thank you to the members of the public. Now let's turn it over to the City Council, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and thank you to the whole city team, Matt, Stacy, Valerie, Leslie. This is, out of so many bad things that came out of the pandemic, this really is one of those really nice, bright lessons that we learned, that we're keeping of something new that worked really well and did help, as the business districts just described, a lot of businesses stay afloat and create new creative outdoor experiences, which is really exciting way for us to really celebrate our city and support our local businesses. And I want to note that, I know you said this in your presentation, but the extensive outreach that you all did to really design this program around what the businesses needed, what it was going to cost, really making a one-stop permit, they don't have to go to multiple departments, they apply once, and you're going to guide them through the whole thing, and there's a grant funding at the end to make sure they can make it work. I mean, this is really, I think, a shining example of how city government can really work to serve and support businesses in our communities. So really want to applaud you all for all of the work that I know, many, many hours. Because I know how many times I've talked to you all about this program, so I can only imagine if that's just me, then you've heard from hundreds of more. I did, Matt, while you're up here, want to give you the chance, because I know we've corresponded with several constituents who wanted to know about road closures. So when our street reopened, and now most recently when K Street reopened, and how the city is ready to support if the business districts decide to reclose those streets. So I wanted to just give you a chance to say that publicly and what the protocols are for that, so that anyone who was wondering knows who to contact and how that could work.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela. And specifically, you know, we truly support this program from, as you can see, tables and chairs to the extensive street closures that we've had on 20th Street, our street, 17th Street. And we, we are not the experts when it comes to the overall operation of the businesses, but we support the businesses, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything to keep that in line. So we, as a city, are taking the position that if, if there is a road closure or any extent of any kind of closure, that we will work with the, the community to get the best results for, for both the city and, and the end user. So yes, there are opportunities to continue to close the streets that have been closed down, but we just need to work with, with all parties to make sure that that's exactly what they want from it.
Absolutely, thank you. So I know we'll be engaging with the Midtown Association, who specifically wants to look at what 20th Street can look like when it's not a crisis design. We're just putting stuff out there, but we're being really thoughtful. So I hope folks will continue to engage with the association. And I know you all, with your creativity and your responsiveness, will be ready to help whenever they decide on what they want to do. But I just want to thank you. We have a lot of this in District 4 in the central city, so I've really seen the responsiveness in the way you've all designed this program, and I'm really excited to see this move forward. So happy to open and close the public hearing and move the item tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Telemontes.
I'm happy to second the item. And Matt, thank you so much, you and your team, for all the work that you guys have done. I've enjoyed Alfresco Dining in downtown. And I ask that you also help us bring it more to South Natomas, to West Natomas, and to just Natomas in general, Northgate, Garnellin. We have a lot of suburban shopping areas that can take advantage of this program. So I ask our staff to maybe bring three designs of what we can do and what's possible in the area as we move forward in this process. We really do want to take advantage of it. I'm going to help you and do that outreach to the businesses, but want to see Alfresco Dining more citywide, so that we can all benefit from these perks. So thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
And I too just want to echo what Councilmember Telemontes indicated and want to say thank you, because when we did the briefing, I asked some items, and I appreciate what the public may not see is I brought up some ideas and that you did modify the fee schedule so that it is clear that this does apply just to the central city. Because, you know, District 1 and many of our districts outside the core, we all want to enjoy Alfresco Dining as well and know that that more ends up in the public parking spots. So I too will gladly help the outreach, because I think this is something our entire city really wants to enjoy. Outside of maybe since New Year's Eve, we generally have phenomenal weather here in Sacramento that can be enjoyed outside. So please let my office know specifically where you may have trouble doing outreach, so that we can work with our local businesses to discuss, how do we bring, in my area, even the suburbs, outside dining? So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues and also say thank you so much. I know this has been a lot of work long before I got here, and I know a lot goes into it. I especially want to recognize all the work that you've done, reaching out to the different P bids, the restaurants, the businesses, and making sure that everyone's included. I know that you have been talking with Stockton Boulevard, you've been talking with Franklin, Floran, and others in my district, and they are so excited to be a part of this program. Like some of my other colleagues have mentioned, I want to see this all throughout the city and not, you know, not just in the, the urban core. We love that, too. I often go out to eat in restaurants in downtown and midtown, but I want to make sure that we have this opportunity also in South Sacramento and other places in the city. Also, I just want to say, you know, one of the, one of my very first jobs was in restaurants. I worked in restaurants for almost 10 years, starting at the age of 15. And I know it's really, really hard business. One of the most common phrases that people say is that, you know, you don't get out of the red for at least, you know, the first year, if not two or three. It's really hard to stay open. A lot of, a lot of restaurants close in their first year. So I think this is going to be such an impactful program to ensure that not only the restaurants that we do have are able to recover from the economic impacts of COVID-19, but that we can also have new restaurants start up and be successful in our city. So I'm really excited. And just a last note, I think this is a, will be a benefit to our goal as a city to become more walkable and bikeable and safer for folks as well to, to, to go around the city and not have those impacts of cars. So grateful for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Getta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it looks like I'm not allowed to put my camera on, but that's okay. I, I just wanted to ask, one, again, it's been seconded already, but I wanted to thank staff for their great work here. I, I did want to request that after the first cycle of grant applications, that if I can get a report back on kind of where they, where the respondents applied for. And, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, outside of the central city, that we can make sure that other, other smaller businesses are getting them, getting access to them. I know we've had a challenge, and I want to thank Leslie Fritsch and her team for working with the Stockton Boulevard and the Vietnamese businesses, and also the Northgate businesses, the Latino businesses out there on the, that normally aren't connected. So I'd like to get a report back just to see how, what the participation on the grant process is on our first round. And the, the second piece is that, you know, those, pay attention to those areas and commercial corridors where we don't have P bids. Northgate obviously being one of them, you know, but there are other areas that, that don't have P bids that have an active communication network. I'd like to make sure that we, we have them involved. The last, the last point I wanted to, you know, make, and I don't know if there's an answer to this, but, you know, I know, I know this, this is a reimbursement program when it comes to the grant funding, and we're doing this because the ARPA funding requires, we want to protect ourselves from a federal clawback, you know. But I, I do have a concern, and maybe staff can talk, speak to this, about, you know, those businesses that can't front the cost to, to do some of the, the, the work, the smaller, you know, you know, we have some strip mall businesses, and they are on a tight margin, and, and how we help them, you know, be able to, to bridge that, that, being able to have the upfront money if they, and, and participate in the program. Some of our more established restaurants may be able to do that, but I worry about that. So maybe staff can comment on, on this, since we do require, you know, this to be a reimbursement program versus a, here's the money, go and build it program.
Okay, thank you. Good suggestion. Councilmember Laloie, oh, Leslie, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was going to address Councilmember Getta's comments if I could.
Please do.
So Councilmember Getta, thank you very much for that question and that comment, because we have learned from some, a number of small businesses that the reimbursable approach may provide some challenges. So we very much want to work with those small businesses as we develop their budgets and as we work with what the scope of that project is and tailor our responses to, to their needs. We are hoping to keep it as a reimbursable program to make sure that the costs are eligible expenses under the ARPA guidelines. And so we will provide a lot of hands-on work to make sure that we can work with them on that reimbursement as quickly as possible. It's a very good point and one that we certainly recognize as we've been doing our outreach, but feel the reimbursable, just because we want to make sure that they're eligible costs as we move forward. So I hope that answers your question, but certainly open for other questions you might have, Councilmember or others.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Fritsch. And I would say that, thank you for taking that into, I'm not interested in, in, you know, right now changing it into a non-reimbursable program. Obviously, we have to make sure we protect ourselves from any kind of federal clawback. But, you know, I think the Better Business Bureau has some small micro grants if we can help, you know, do a little, you know, handholding or, or soft passage to be able to help with any kind of those bridge loans. I, I just, I just think that we would increase our participation outside of the central city if we were able to help in that manner. So thank you again. I just want to thank staff for all their, their work on this, and I look forward to this being outside of this, outside of central city. Obviously, I enjoy the central city participation when I've gone out there as well. But thank you, staff, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Getta. Feel better. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of, I, like, all my colleagues indicated to, first of all, thank you so much to the staff for your, your time on this, because this does play an important role. I am also concerned about some of the areas outside of the, the central city. You know, whether it's Natomas, Northgate, or Del Paso Boulevard. The designs that I, that I just saw, they're phenomenal, but I think they work much better within the, the central city. I was wondering if there's, but, there's been any time to actually go through Northgate or Del Paso Boulevard, maybe in the future come up with some other running that would match those areas? If it's possible, that would be great. And also, how are we communicating with businesses in other districts, like District 2 or District 3 and 1?
Yeah, we've, we've done a lot of outreach, and as, as of tomorrow, we're going to be just hitting media, you know, circuits to, to get them, to get the message out to people that may not have heard this through any of their sources. We're definitely going to rely on, on your avenues to help us to get out to your social media. We're going to be using social media. So we will be challenging you to get this information out as well to your constituents, because the more that, this is a citywide program. This is not just about downtown or midtown. This is, this is definitely a citywide program. We definitely want to see those patios out, outside of the, the core of central city. So we will be asking for your help to, to engage your constituents as well.
Thank you very much.
I would like to add a few comments to that, because I think we've provided some additional enhancements to the program this time. We have a far more extensive network, as it were, of community navigators, both through our Economic Mobility Grant as well as through the Inclusive Economic Development Coalition. They've been going, you know, door-to-door with businesses for some period of time. And so we feel we have a little bit more of tentacles into the community that we may have, that we may not have had as effectively last time. So we're really enhancing our outreach, as Matt very aptly said. We will be doing a lot of work, but a lot of work with those kind of key messengers and trusted messengers in the community, which I think is an enhancement to the program as we embark on this, and an enhancement to the programs as we move forward.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a question. First of all, I'll add all my congratulations. Councilmember Valenzuela said it right. This was one of the silver linings, if there could be such a thing, during COVID. I mean, to see so many people enjoying our great food scene in Sacramento and to be able to do it in a safe way was something we all said at the time, oh my, this needs to be a permanent part of, of Sacramento's food scene. And this allows us to achieve that. I guess I just want to have one question from a layperson's sort of perspective. So there's the fee schedule, and I was glad to see all the, the business organizations, at least from the downtown, in full support. There's the fee schedule, and then there's the grant program. So how do they relate? In other words, is, is there going to be 100% overlap between those who can't afford, couldn't afford the fees? Are they going to be first to get the grants so that no one is, like, find, like, no one is barred from attending a school field trip? Because we always find ways to provide aid to those whose families might not be able to afford it. Is there similar principle being applied here? Namely, that every restaurant who wants to do this will, will, will find a way to help them do it through the grant program despite the fees? Because I guess I would worry a little bit that the fees on their face may not be unreasonable, but for a small business, a small restaurant, maybe they're going to look at this and say, well, you know, we're such tight margins that we're not going to be able to do this, even though we might want to. So what's the, what's the connection between the grant program and the fees?
Well, the grant program is really what, what gets the product started out on the city's right-of-way. So we're talking specifically within the city's right-of-way.
Okay.
So once the patio gets put out on the street, and the owner is determining the size of, of, of the actual patio.
It's the infrastructure, it's the foundational cost, okay.
The foundation.
Not the ongoing cost. So we're going to charge, so then that answers my question, not, maybe not in a great way. Are we, who are we leaving out here with this fee schedule? And why do we have to charge fees? In other words, if it's going to, just for the sake of discussion, if it's going, if this program is going to increase the patronage of our restaurants and therefore more, more tax, more, more revenue, why doesn't something like this pay for itself?
Yeah, we, we agree with you, Mayor. And the reason that we're charging fees is really a recovery fee. We're not charging anything over than what the recovery is. We estimate that it's going to cost the city $120,000 to staff this, this program, and all we're doing is recovering that general cost. So it's not, it's not a revenue source for the city. It's really just a re, recovery fee for us.
So I know we're living in deficit times. We'll see what the budget looks like, but I just might want to at least have a discussion about this in the context of the, the Budget Committee and the full City Council when it comes to the budget. Is this something that is, it's a modest cost. I just want everyone to be able to participate. Just an equity issue.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. Does the, does a, does a payment start immediately? Or is there a, a gap between, hey, we're done now, after like month, 90 days, your first payment?
So the fee schedule becomes active July 1 of this year. And so they have from now until July to get the patio bill and not pay any fees until, until July.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm prepared to support this for all the right reasons. It's great work. Maybe want to look at that $120,000 and figure out, will we make sure that we don't leave anyone out? Especially outside the central city, too, as you're talking about, right? Okay, we have a motion and a second? Let's, all those in favor, please say aye. We have to do roll call again because of the remote. Sorry, I'm trying to get you out of here early.
Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Mayor Prochamp Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay, that's good, that passes. Let's move now on to item number 32.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Tracy Knighton. I'm the agency's Human Resource Program Manager. And on December 13th, 2022, I presented a staff report recommending that the City Council and Housing Authority of the City of Sacramento authorize the agency to approve an amendment to the PERS contract between the agency and the Board of Administration of the Public Employee Retirement System. The amendment includes providing contract exclusion and partial service, service retirement. CalPERS completed a public agency review of the Sacramento City Housing Authority in March of 2021 in regard to how the agency interpreted which type of employees were excluded from CalPERS membership. Based on the review, PERS recommended, and the agency agrees, to amend its contract with PERS to properly designate which classification can be excluded from membership in the PERS retirement system. Currently, temporary employees are listed as excluded from CalPERS membership. If these employees exceed 1,000 hours of service, they must become members so they cannot be excluded from membership. The only classification of employees that can be excluded from membership are student interns. In addition, the agency would like to add a partial service retirement option to those who meet the normal retirement age and service requirements. This change will enable members to reduce work time, continue working, and receive a partial service retirement allowance with, with partial service retirement. A phased retirement program will assist the agency with knowledge management and continuity of operations in the short term, but also prepare the next generation of experts for success. The resolution of intention gave the required 20-day public notice to authorize the agency to amend the retirement contract. Today, I am requesting final approval for the final resolutions, and this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any public testimony?
I have no public testimony on this item.
Okay. Any questions about this? Any concerns?
Need to move the item. Oh, I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. I think that was Jennings and Valenzuela.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Laloei.
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. That measure passes. We now move to, and Happy New Year, Stojr and your team. To everybody, welcome. Jim, thank you. We'll see you a lot this year. Or housing.
Yes.
Yes. What was that?
More money for housing.
Good comeback. Excellent. We'll, we'll find it. Okay, we now move to item 33. So members, as part of your consent agenda today, one of the authorities that I guess the city charter and the council rules and procedure give the mayor is to be able to recommend council appointments to boards and commissions, both internal to the city and also some of the JPAs that we serve on. And the council passed that an hour or so ago as part of the consent calendar. The other authority that you grant the mayor subject to the approval of the council is to recommend a vice mayor and a mayor pro tem for the year. And this, these titles are both honorary and substantive. They're substantive in that there are times during the course of the year where I might miss a meeting or, or, or be outside the chamber, and it's important that the meeting be, you know, run and run, run well. And secondly, throughout the community, there are so many community events. I know I try to get to as much as I can, but can't get to everything. And so the vice mayor, mayor pro tem, and frankly, all the council members, because you don't have to have that citywide title to represent me or any of us in the city. We can all work that out informally, and you're all welcome in, you're all welcome in my district, let's put it that way, okay? Throughout, throughout the city. And this year, I would like to recommend to you that you approve my recommendation for Councilmember Eric Gueda to be the vice mayor and Councilmember Mai Vang to be the mayor pro tem. Councilmember Gueda, of course, has served on the City Council for many years, and he brings a wealth of experience to the body. Previously served as vice mayor where he did chair a number of important meetings. But Eric is known citywide, respected citywide. He's got a real policy bent about him, and I know will do a great job as vice mayor for the calendar year 2023. And then Mai Vang has, I know impressed all of us with her fast start here at City Hall over the course of two years, both in terms of her, her energy, that heart and hustle in her district, and all she did and continues to do, but especially during the pandemic with the clinics and just all the incredible community organizing. And then they're on the, here on the dais with all of her colleagues, past colleagues, and now her current colleagues has earned the respect of all of you, of all of us for just the right demeanor, intelligent questions. And, you know, that old thing, which is so important in politics these days, disagreeing without being disagreeable. Really, really important. And so I think it's important that you be the mayor pro tem. And so we've got a great team, and of course, we're all a team. But I would ask for your approval, this recommendation, and we will move forward together. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to support this motion. I, I have worked with both of my colleagues. They sit on my right and my left, and it gives me a great opportunity to whisper in their ear. So this is a very, very, no, I, on a serious note, they, they have served the city well. They serve their districts well, and they would be excellent representatives, excellent leaders in the city of Sacramento. So I would like to, to support the motion for Eric Gera to be our vice mayor and Mai Vang to be our pro tem.
Very good. I see.
That's a motion I'd like to second. Councilmember Jennings.
Seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. That is a motion. And I, I have Councilmember Vang up. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I just, first just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for even giving me an opportunity to be mayor pro tem. I don't know what that is, and hope that I will do the job right. You know, it's been an honor serving District Eight, and I just really want to say thank you for entrusting me to be in this new role, and I look forward to continuing the service in the district and citywide in my new capacity if so, if this council so choose to vote me in as mayor pro tem. But really just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and just really excited for 2023. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for being willing to do it. And Councilmember Gueda, do you accept?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And for, I wanted to thank you, and I wish I could be there in, in person, but obviously I didn't want to, want to give anybody, I want to make sure we had a quorum for next Tuesday's meeting and work this thing on. You know, I thank you again. I, we've, we've served through a long time here, through also some very difficult times, and, and I'm excited about this opportunity here and the optimism here with all of our colleagues to serve this next year. Thank you also to my seatmate, Councilmember Jennings. You know, I think maybe it was the mayor's tactical approach of appointing two people on the side of him to get a motion on the table, but wanted to thank him for working with him over the last few years and continue working. And also thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for the, the second there. But as you said, I, I think this is a, this is a team effort to, to move our city forward, and I'm excited about this and appreciative about the opportunity. And looking forward to getting better to working so we can get back here on the council this next week. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and appreciate everyone here.
Thank you so much. Councilmember soon to be Vice Mayor Gueda. Okay, Councilmember Laloei?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Gueda, and I, equally, I want to congratulate Pro Tem. I know, you know, I reached out to Councilmember Jennings. Now I kind of know, Mayor, what the, the tactical works that you work. It's very, very impressive. You have Councilmember Jennings between the two, so you can control the two and make sure that we're on the right path. So, and then also, it's my understanding, Councilmember Vang, that, that this new position is customary that next Tuesday lunch is on the, on, on the, it's the, and then the following week, the vice mayor has to provide. So.
Yeah.
First week is mayor pro tem, and then the following week, the vice, vice mayor. So I want to congratulate you both, and I'm a definite thumbs up on that. So thank you very much.
Okay. Let us call the roll on the motion made by Councilmember Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela.
Mayor, I do have one member online that would like to make comments on this item.
Of course, yes.
Call in user one. If you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and you couldn't have selected two more people that I endorse. Mr. Gera and Ms. Mai Vang, both have been very supportive of our family-owned cheesecake business that, and they're in different districts, of course. But I've studied those two, and I believe they're going to really fight for the underdog. Don't forget about what you saw tonight, which were teenagers from an underserved community, and I believe these two will be instrumental in helping get some resources to Del Paso Heights. So this is a wonderful selection, Mayor, and as you saw, you were well respected and received tonight by the Grant Pacers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I have no more speakers.
All right, let's call the roll then, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Laloei.
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Gara.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. Thank you, colleagues, all of my colleagues. It's a good start. All right, members, that ends the formal part of the agenda. We now move to a public testimony for items not on the agenda. And why don't we hear from the members of the public, please?
So, Mayor, I have four speakers. The first is Barbara Boyce, then Chris Martinez, then Carly Brannan.
Hi, Mayor. Happy New Year, Council. Well.
Want to move to the mic so we can hear you, please.
Oh, is this better right here?
That's better, yes, right there.
Is this better?
Thank you.
I'm here to discuss housing, particularly my housing going forward. I'm 63, and I don't think I'm going to get any younger. I do like to work. I deliver groceries, enjoy it very, very much. I have a six-page list from self-help housing. I'm about halfway through it with really no, nothing I can grab onto. $500 keeps coming back into my head for some reason. It seems a little low for rent, but I'm not really looking for rent. See, I've got some ideas. I've got some plans. Kind of a crafter. It's just me, myself, and I. Got some roommates. We're, we're working on getting along. We're doing okay. I like to knit. I like to spin yarn. I want to learn to use the hammer with carpentry, and maybe someday buy an RV and do some traveling around. That's going to take some money. So I need to save some money. I need to save more than I'm putting out. So I'm looking for a fair deal.
You're looking for a job?
I've got a job. Another job? Sure.
You're looking for, you're looking for more affordable housing?
Um, I, I would not throw job off the table.
So I'm just trying, I'm only asking the question.
Affordable housing, yes.
Are we just trying to figure out who we might connect you with here among the city team to see?
Everyone.
Okay.
But housing for sure to start.
Okay, Madam Assistant City Manager, could we ask somebody from the team to please meet with, is Boyce maybe right now in the back and see if we could maybe drill down a little bit, because it's hard to do it in, in the public session, and see if there's something we can do.
Sounds good.
To help you.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to start a path.
Mr. Jassho is right in the back, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll try to help you.
Council and Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for coming. I wish you.
You got it.
A happy year, okay?
I'd like to come more often.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It's your chambers. Who's next?
Chris Martinez, Carly Brannan, David Anderson, and then I have 10 callers online.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Chris Martinez. I'm a carpenter here out of Local 46, and I was just coming down here to talk about our area wages and benefit standards. I was hoping that we could get our standards out there and enforce them more because, I mean, we have a lot of construction force workers getting abused by their, not getting paid enough, no, no benefits, can't take their kids to the dentist if they don't have the benefits. We need a livable wage. I hate to see that these workers can build these apartment complexes in these places, but they can't afford to live in them. You know, prevailing wage would be something good. Local hire, you know, a lot of our community members have to travel over the bay to make a livable wage to live here, missing out on their kids' ballgames and whatnot, and I just don't think it's right. Apprenticeships. We have a lot of youth that, you know, might not want to go to college or have a way to go to college, and we have a trade school that, you know, pays you to learn a craft and be a good member in this community. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're holding these developers to, you know, better wages and benefits to these contract workers and construction companies, so that way we can make sure all our community members are making a fair wage living here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Carly Brannan, then David Anderson.
Hi there. My name's Carly Brannan. My pronouns are they/them, and I am a resident of District Two. Sacramento City Government has conspired with police and code enforcement to skirt Martin versus Boise by using code enforcement to steal the survival gear of our unhoused neighbors and furthering, or further deplace, displacing them. While the mechanism that you have all been using has changed, the method and the outcome is the same: theft and trashing of items that are needed for survival, and violent removal of human beings who are simply trying to live their lives. What makes these actions especially heinous is that it has continued through these unprecedented devastating and deadly storms. Just Saturday, I was at Camp Resolution with my loved ones to find the majority of their tents flattened. RVs had sustained significant damage from the wind. One had even been moved a couple of yards from where it was because of the wind. To take people's homes from them is particularly deplorable during these storms as they rage on. People have been found dead in their vehicles who had been trapped in the flash floods. At least two people living outside have died, being crushed by fallen trees, and I wonder if either of those people had previously lived in RVs that have been seized by Sacramento Police Department. Daryl, do you remember meeting with advocates a few years ago, right here at City Council, and talking about, actually promising that you would address the issue of unhoused folks' property being thrown away instead of being bagged and tagged? Because it's still happening today. Do you remember a few years back when eight people died during a storm, and you, Daryl, apologized and agreed to stop sweeping during storms? It's continuing again. Daryl, you campaigned on the backs of our unhoused neighbors. You promised to help, and I've seen you get an awful lot of money, but I've seen no positive results from that money. Where is the money being spent? Where are the resources? Where are the positive outcomes? It, it's time to stop it. Knock it off.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Stop this beast. They're killing people.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is David Anderson. After Mr. Anderson, we're go, online, I have 11 speakers. Dylan Hoy Bianchi would be first.
Hi, members of the council. I'd like to use my time to I'd like to use my time tonight to implore this council to stop arbitrary police sweeps of all homeless encampments, especially safe and successful experiments in self-created community like Camp Resolution. Of course, everyone in this council wants humane outcomes for all homeless, and yet we're unable to make visible progress as defined by the homeless themselves. Inconsistency of policy at the ground level, as seen in these recent police sweeps especially, is inhumane, and police, sorry, policies that don't reflect financial efficiencies with which the homeless population must themselves deal with are insane. Safe housing could be built and operated by the community itself for a tiny fraction of the cost without anyone suing each other, and whatever bureaucracy prevents this is not just inhumane, but also insane. When enforcement is arbitrary, it creates not just waste and inefficient resource use, but human suffering, real, avoidable, extra human suffering. I'll close by urging you that when you go home tonight to your comfortable homes, take an extra moment to consider what it would be like to experience having everything that you've worked so hard to build over and over be yanked out from under you unpredictably all the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dylan Hoy Bianchi, then PJ.
Hi, my name is Dylan Hoy Bianchi. I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm calling to comment on something which should have been on the agenda. Frankly, it's extremely disappointing that, other than a brief aside by Mayor Steinberg at the beginning, the council has failed to address during this meeting the devastation that this series of storms has caused in our unhoused community. As the mayor noted, at least two of our unhoused neighbors were killed during the storm so far, and this is not just a tragedy. To simply characterize it as a tragedy implies that nobody is at fault, that it was a sad but unavoidable consequence of the bad weather, and that is not the case. The City of Sacramento cannot avoid their role in these deaths. They cannot hide the blood on their hands, not to mention the responsibility for the suffering of thousands who are stuck outdoors. This storm did not come out of nowhere. We had time to prepare, and yet the city only opened 70 beds for respite? The city made no effort to stop code enforcement from towing people's trailers as the storm loomed? This is not an indictment of the variety of city staff members who I'm sure have been working very hard to do what they can within the limitations of their positions. No, this is an utter failure of city leadership, both the City Council and City Manager Chan. Did you learn nothing from the deaths two years ago? Have you heard none of what advocates have been telling you for years? How do you sleep at night? And I would like to just close with a brief quote from the Bible. This is Matthew, Chapter 25, verse 40, 41. I know not everybody shares the same faith, but I think the moral lesson here is universal. Then he will say to those on his left, "Depart from me, you who are cursed, into the eternal fire prepared for the devils and angels; for I was hungry, and you gave me nothing to eat; I was thirsty, and you gave me nothing to drink; I was a stranger, and you did not invite me in; I needed clothes, and you did not clothe me; I was sick and in prison, and you did not look after me." They will answer, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty, or a stranger, or needing clothes, or sick in prison, and did not help you?" He will reply, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did not do for one of the least of these, you did not do for me." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ, then Richard Wake.
You claim to want to help our unhoused population. Daryl claims to want to give people a quote right to housing, yet you plug in harmful stereotypes of people's aversion to housing. People aren't avoiding housing, they're avoiding your version of housing, and that's when you actually have housing, which you don't. Your version of housing is harmful. It harms people who dare to expect autonomy, self-determination. You take that away when you have, when you even have shelter available, which you currently don't. And now your city manager is sending out code enforcement and police officers to steal people's only shelter in the middle of this historic series of storms. Why? Do you hate the poor, Daryl? Answer! Why do you allow your city manager to continue bringing harm on those with the least? What about them do you so despise that you set forth violent policy which will only result in their harm, in their deaths? Don't claim you give a shit about their lives when you push your city manager or allow him to continue criminalizing folk who have had what little shelter they have taken away. RVs and cars cited for more than 72 hours without outdated registration or tickets are being taken because you view revenue from a ticket as more important than people's literal lives. You view keeping laws strictly as more important than children's lives. Oh, and one thing your police do is put out notices. We have photos, Sean, but once police show up and see advocates, they say they'll be back at some random time to try and avoid accountability. These are the boots you lick, Sean, the boots that would try and avoid video evidence of their illegal activities, of their deadly activities. This is evil, plain and simple. This is a continuation of your blatant disgust at their existence, and that disgusts me. I ask that you immediately require the city manager to halt all sweeps. Sweeps during the winter, during the storms, is a death sentence. I question the very humanity of anyone who prioritized code enforcement over human lives. You do remember these are human beings, right? You do remember these people matter, even though you prioritize the rich living in East Sac or Land Park, right? Maybe regain your humanity by remembering them.
Thank you for your comments. Richard Wake is our next speaker, then Barry Boyd.
Yeah, thank you for taking my call. Richard Wake, City Council, District 7. You know, what I'm going to say, I think, is, in all fairness, shouldn't really be applying to the new members in Districts 1, 3, and 5, because they were handed this mess. But, you know, I would like to say, you know, I, during the past several weeks, I've been taking my wife to work. She works at the Golden One Center, and here in City Council, District 7, there's, you know, people down here as well that are unhoused, and down here, just right down the street from me, there were, well, only three people, but that's still three too many. One guy was sleeping on the sidewalk with a tarp with virtually nothing over him except a tarp and a sleeping bag. I see people downtown walking around and in, on Freeport Boulevard soaking wet with nothing but a blanket around them, people hanging out their clothes to dry on makeshift clotheslines in some of the encampments on Third Street and in other locations in downtown Sacramento. This is really disgraceful. You know, some of you have had well over six years, some eight years, to reduce this problem. Homelessness has gone up over 60% in the last two years. You know, it's really kind of tear-jerking to see this stuff. You know, we really need to say, start saying no to the NIMBY people. There's 100 acres worth of property on Meadowview Road that we could house people now. There's vacant buildings. Three years or four years ago, Kimberly Church gave a complete list of every vacant property and every zip code in the city, and that was thrown under the rug. Lastly, I would like to commend Councilmember Maple for taking all the food and snacks out to the respite center. That's one of the reasons I helped Councilmember Maple get elected. She's the real deal, and I want to commend her for what she did, because I certainly didn't see anybody else who...
Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd, then Sarah Rewitch.
I'm hoping everyone can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, sir.
Fantastic. I'd like to start off this evening by congratulating the Grant High School boys' football team for their Division II state championship. Fantastic job, gentlemen and coaches. And I would also like to congratulate the new Vice Mayor, Councilmember Guerra, and the new Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember May Vang. And Councilmember May Vang is my council member here in the very proud area of Meadowview in Council District 8. And the, I was going to, that is actually all that I had to say, except for hearing the comments of the last caller from Council District 8, the Greenhaven Pocket, Southland Park, Council District 7, stating that Meadowview has 102 acres available, in his opinion, in his statement, I guess, to house all of Sacramento's unhoused, or as many as that 102 acres can handle. For those who are quite unaware, since Meadowview has a very, very small business corridor that lies there on Meadowview Road, that 102 acres is and should be used to generate revenues for Council District 8, specifically since its attachment directly to the Meadowview neighborhood, to be brought in along with the Delta Shores neighborhood, the Walmart structure, so forth, so on, with that 102 acres in addition to its multi-sports sporting complex, bringing in hotels, motels, and other generating, revenue-generating entities, not as the spot to...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Sarah Rewitch.
Hi, before you start the timer, I have something to say. I know that there are a lot of people who are trying to...
Please start the timer.
I know there are a lot of people who are trying to speak, and they said that they're not able to raise their hands. I just wanted that to be told right now, and I'm hoping you can reset my timer so I can have my two minutes, because that was a public service announcement to you. You're not going to do it? Okay. I was lying in my bed the other night, hearing that howling, you know, wind of about 70 miles per hour. It was the same wind that took down two giant trees that came three feet from smashing me in my bedroom, so I was terrified. I don't know about you all, but I was really scared, and I have shelter. I was in a house that's warm, and I, the storms have caused tremendous damage. I don't need to go over that, but I know some of these people who are staying out there. They're unhoused, and someone mentioned Camp Resolution. I have people I know there because I've been bringing supplies, as have many community members, and I'm horrified by the sweeps that are happening to those people experiencing homelessness. I know Camp Resolution is safer right now, but that's so inhumane and extremely cruel, and I cry almost every night thinking about how horrible it is that I live in a city where that happens, that you all who are charged with helping our people, with protecting us, with being public servants, aren't stopping that cruel inhumanity. It is just, it's beyond me, and I would like you, and I implore you to make that stop right now, please, during these storms, at the very least, for right now. And another thing I want to ask you is, please, there are thousands of people just trying to stay alive out there right now, and their survival gear has been destroyed. We community members can't keep up with the expenses for those life essentials. We are trying, but the cost of a cheap tent is around 30, a sleeping bag 20, tarps are 20 bucks, and one individual can't make up for, you know, the close to, I mean, it's like over 9,000 people who are out there, and there are not enough beds, so don't say there's room for people to have beds to sleep. There aren't. Please, please step up. We need our emergency...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. I'd like to remind members of the public, our council rules or procedures state that once the first caller is completed, we disable the raise hand feature, and we don't take any more speaker slips in chambers. So, our next speaker is Lambert Davis, then Sarah Whipple.
Yes, I would like to welcome the three new members, and I can definitely, as a person who's a native of Sacramento, speak on what I'm getting ready to say. Now, I attended tonight specifically to watch the Grant High School Pacers, and what I watched, I study the city council meetings like I'm trying to get a degree, and it's getting close now to where I'm going to want my degree. As I watched tonight, I watched the teenagers, and I started thinking, wow, that's the same teenagers that couldn't swim in the grand pool this summer. That's the same teenagers that need to get jobs in the summer through Yipsey. You should really emphasize that they should get summer jobs. It's one thing to have a photo out. The other thing you want to watch, which I didn't see tonight, is the city manager's report. I think the city attorney should be held accountable this year to make sure that's enforced. And another thing I noticed while I was sitting there today, I didn't see the city manager there, and unless it was a death in the family, that was very disrespectful. So, whoever...
No, 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 no. The city manager is diligent, hardworking. If he misses a single meeting, that's not dereliction of duty in any way. So, come on, Lambert.
Okay, wait a minute.
If you're going to call every week, just say, just keep it real, okay?
Okay, so how much time do I have? Because I can't see it. Anyway, I appreciate it. Looked like whoever that was, I think it was Lynn Milstein, she was there. My point is, it doesn't matter how hard somebody works, that was a very important event, and I want to end by saying that there's $5 million that's been approved to District 2, and from what I've heard throughout the community, we haven't seen anything dispersed. That needs to be done immediately. Why do District 2 have to keep waiting when money's been approved? Remember those teenagers. They have parents and grandparents that live in Delta Heights.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you. I have three more speakers, Sarah Whipple, then Thea Yakub.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Sarah Whipple. I'm an outreach worker at Homage Reduction Services and the interim director of the Sex Workers Outreach Project here in Sacramento. I'm here in my personal capacity to let you all know about some of the things that we've been seeing in this community. I'm sure it's not hard to guess that the unhoused community has been devastated, as you've seen many people in their houses have been as well, but I want to go back to New Year's Eve when the first bomb cyclone was approaching, and elderly residents at the island began to realize that they didn't have the supplies to weather the storm, and they started asking for help, and I get emotional thinking about it, because we were trying to, like, get supplies together, and there was nothing. I mean, people weren't sending help. It was New Year's Eve. Everyone was out enjoying their nights. And Camp Resolution got together blankets and tents and tarps and sent them to the island because they thought that they'd need them more. And I'm not telling you this is an inspiration, because it's not. It's not an inspiration. It's insulting and devastating that they would have to do that in the face of their own survival. I live on Roosevelt Road. I do outreach there every week, and I, that's how I met Skip Sorenson and his pit bull baby girl who died this week, and that's how I know that there was another sweep there today. Stopping sweeps is the bare minimum that the city can do, but we need to be doing so much more, and that includes supporting people's immediate survival strategies while housing options aren't available. If you don't have outreach teams at the ready, there are organizations that do and that already have trusted relationships with the community, and they just need basic survival supplies that the community needs urgently, and so please stop the sweeps and support people's survival strategies.
Next speaker is Thea Yakub, and then Rachel's our final speaker. Thea, if you'll unmute. I'm going to move on to Rachel.
I would like to express my extreme disappointment and heartbreak that SAC PD continues to steal our unhoused neighbors' survival gear and further displace people during these devastating and deadly storms. Please stop the sweeps immediately. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Thea, if you'll unmute. So, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Let's hear from members of the City Council here to their council ideas and questions. Again, you know, when an item has not been formally agendized, we can't really debate it, but it is appropriate for council members to express their points of view on any subject. And so, let's start with Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this has been a long week and a half for a lot of people in our city, and I want to echo your comments at the beginning of the meeting, thanking our city teams, but particularly in this case, I want to thank DCR and Regional Transit. I know I was in a meeting with yourself and Councilmember Maple last week and on many, many texts in between those meetings to try to secure additional respite locations and transportation to get to those locations, and I know that the teams really did what they could to try to get people to safety. I do think that, in the context of those conversations the city manager brought up, that our weather criteria for activating respite really doesn't include extreme events. Technically, it wasn't supposed to trigger at all last week, and we kind of pushed to get something open because we knew the floods might come, that wind was going to be a factor, and we did the best we could. But I do want to ask, and I know we're talking about the log, so I don't really know, I'll just put this out into the ether, about the city management team, and I know Laney's here for Howard, that we can have a conversation about potentially amending the weather-based criteria to include extreme weather advisories without temperature criteria, because I do think that's a conversation we should have. And I do want to say, related to a letter I received today, and I think several of you received as well, from local advocates and civil rights organizations, that I do think it's appropriate, in the context of that weather criteria, to talk about whether or not we should be taking any enforcement actions that aren't urgent or a matter of private property. I think that's a conversation that I'd like to see us have. I know, the mayor, when you brought forward the vehicle ordinance a year ago, last December, we were attempting to put some greater protections in place around when and how we might move vehicles that are used for shelter. we were attempting to put some greater protections in place around when and how we might move vehicles that are used for shelter. I don't, I mean, I'd love to revisit that, but I'm, that's not my decision. So I'll leave, defer that to the rest of the council. Um, but I do think that at that time, we were promised weekly reports on vehicle um, relocations that I haven't gotten for months. Um, so I would really like an update from the city management team about that as well when we bring back weather-based criteria. Um, and overall, I think there's a real question because I think what we're struggling with, with this weather-based criteria is that we no longer have an ongoing winter program. We used to have something called Winter Sanctuary that the county funded, where churches were open every night between November 1st and the end of January. So there was a routine place that people knew they could go to get shelter and get a warm meal during the cold nights. That program was defunded several years ago. And so I think there is a real question now of how much we're paying for temporary weather-based activations for these temporary mobilizations versus what it might cost to just have a winter sanctuary-type program back up again and for us to just proactively fund nonprofits to have something available to people all winter so that we're not kind of scrambling every time there's a weather activation or an extreme event coming up, which tends to happen most frequently during the, those winter months. So that's one item I'd like to ping, um, to, for us to discuss, an overall item about weather-based criteria, whether it should be winter sanctuary or weather-based model and how we conduct um, whether or not we should conduct nonessential enforcement during that time, um, as well as the weekly reports that, um, I'm not sure where those went, but I would love to get an update on where those are.
Um, really, you want to agendize a council discussion on all these questions related to um, emergency relief?
Absolutely. And, and I want to recognize, um, because I know it's hard to see um, from an advocate's perspective because we don't often do these things in public, but there were a lot, a lot of phone calls. There was a lot of stress. There was a lot of um, scrambling. And, and I want to appreciate all of you who I named and didn't name, who I know were trying really, really hard, um, including you, Mayor, to get more services open for people on very quick um, turnaround. But I do think it warrants us taking a step back now that we're through this near-term episode this weekend to figure out if the overall approach might need to shift and, and to have that conversation. Um, so that's one big item in response to the conversations we were having last week. Um, on a separate, less serious item, um, uh, regarding accelerated and deferred areas. Um, so now that our colleagues have officially joined us from the odd number of districts, yay. Um, I just want to make sure that our communication about what district people are in is consistent because we're getting continued phone calls and um, emails from people who are confused. And I'm bringing this up because I know Mindy and I have talked, but it's not just Mindy's department. So, but in general, um, the consensus is even number of districts don't go into effect until the next election. And so, and the odd number of districts went into effect in December. So we're going to have areas that are not in a district that should be listed as deferred. Right now, if you look up East SAC on the district locator tool, it still says they're in District Four, even though that district boundary hasn't officially taken effect. So I'd like to see that corrected. And likewise, for areas like Land Park, that Councilmember Jennings and I now share, I'd like it to list that it's both District Seven and District Four until the 2024 election, when District Four's boundaries actually move. Um, and similar steps should be taken with the agenda items. Sorry, city attorney, did you?
Oh, sorry. I'm just, that's not actually accurate. Um, but I can get some more information out about it because since Councilmember Jennings won his election for District Seven, he fully controls the area now that's been uh, redistricted to be Council District Seven. But I'll definitely work with the city clerk to just get more information out there about it. And I, um, and I know we're currently working on a couple of things to make sure that online people are able to find that easier as well.
I appreciate that. I actually think we should probably agendize that then, whether public or in closed session because the Attorney General actually issued an opinion that's different. And I think our own city opinion that you get recalled from the old district because you're still representing the old district because they're who elected you.
It's actually aligned. Their opinion is not different from ours. It's aligned. But, but again, uh, uh, obviously there's more information needs to be put out there again to review it. And it's a good opportunity with the new council members, although it really doesn't affect the new ones, but.
Okay, I think um, I'd love to um, still reiterate my request that we have a discussion, whether it's in closed session or open session. Because um, you know, the people who work for the Attorney General's office, who live in Land Park, um, have told me differently. So I think it's important that we have that conversation. Because I know this is obviously a new thing for our city, how we're implementing redistricting right now. And I just want to make sure that we're all aligned. Because if the old District Four can recall me, then I think that means I still represent them. And that's um, what I've read from the city, um, from the Attorney General's office. So I just want to make sure that we have that conversation. So um, that'll be it for me now, Mayor, until the adjourned in memory.
Okay. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to echo uh, many of the concerns that Councilmember Valenzuela had. Um, this storm was really devastating. It was devastating to our city or community. I want to start by saying again, like, our staff, city staff did amazing work. I, I personally was on the phone very late into the night on New Year's Eve, um, you know, helping. We had city staff out at the island um, to help, helping getting people off in a water rescue. Um, and you know, that we literally working 24/7, 12-hour shifts um, to, to help people in the storm and to make sure that they, they had what they need. So thank you to staff so much, um, especially to DCR, especially to Public Works, Chief Lester. Um, thank you for the work that you did. Uh, but I do want to take a moment to, to really uplift the names of the people who lost their lives. Rebecca Roddy and Skip Sorenson, those are two people that died during the storm. That's real loss of life that happened in the city of Sacramento. Um, and they mattered. Their lives mattered. Um, and so I just wanted to take a moment to say their names, to mourn their losses. Um, and know that we are, um, that I'm really interested in a targeted approach, making sure that we are prepared in the future um, for other storm events or other weather events that come forth and that we are able to make sure that we are protecting all people. Um, so, so I just wanted to say that. And um, you know, my heart is heavy thinking about their, their loss. So, thank you.
Councilmember Jennings, and I want to make a comment about the same topic, please. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, driving through the city today, um, throughout the whole South Sacramento and downtown, and that's as far as I was able to get before coming back here for our meetings. Uh, you see the, the number of trees that are down, you see the, the number of piles that have been put up. You see the number of crews that are out working in each one of our districts. Um, and we have to give credit to all of the departments that did an incredible job of, of meeting the need that we have right now. As I talk to different constituents, they talk about the devastation that's happened here in Sacramento. And I understand what they're saying when they say that, but I look at it from the other side, which is the number of people who are out there working, volunteers and workers who are out there doing the work every day to clean up all that we see that we call devastation. But in reality, um, they're doing a great job of cleaning it up. And I saw that, I witnessed it today, and I got a chance to talk to some of the crews and encourage them to keep going and that we would bring more volunteers out there to help them because they, they, they're, they're committed to doing the work. They just need more resources in order to be able to do it. And we have another series of storms that are coming in. So I just want to support Councilmember Valenzuela's point on clarity as far as communication is concerned and what districts we represent. And I think it's important that we have that, whether it be here in this chamber or whether it be in closed session, that we be clear. Because it's important that we communicate with the constituents that are out there who don't have as much information as we have and give them a comfort that there is going to be support for them, there is going to be help for them. Here are places that you can go, here are things that you can do. And so in order for us to be able to communicate, we have to know effectively which are our districts. And so I think some of us may be clear, some of us may not be clear. Whatever the case may be, we need to have a clear conversation so we understand exactly who we should be communicating to. And I think I'm clear, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to focus on what I'm clear or not. What I'm, what I hear in this conversation is that not all of us are clear. And so I want to make sure that we have that conversation sooner than later because I'm moving out, touching every single constituent that I can, whether it's because a tree has fallen on their home, whether their power is out, whether they, they need services, whether they're homeless, whatever the case may be. I'm trying to reach them. I want to make sure that all of us are doing the same thing. So I want to support your request.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Mr. Mayor, if you, you want to speak.
On the same, were you going to speak on the subject? Different subject?
Different.
Okay, thank you. So um, I saw over these last several days, the potential, the potential of what this city-county partnership around homelessness could bring. And no doubt, there are a lot of bugs, uh, so to speak, to be, to work out. But for example, the county is operating a respite center in the city limits at the Hart Senior Center. That hasn't been well-reported, but that was an agreement made between uh, the city and county staffs as a result of this partnership agreement. And it's ironic, I mean, hundreds of people have sought refuge and respite, and that's been really good. The shelters, the respite centers largely have not been at capacity, which begs a really important question. What do we need to do better to coordinate the community efforts, the DCR efforts, and the county efforts to reach out to the people who are in the encampments? To be more consistent, more strategic around helping bring people in? There was a lot of talk. Excuse me. This is not just about the emergency weather situation. The partnership agreement calls for 10 teams, city and county, including clinically trained and certified mental health workers to actually be working in 20 tent encampments every single month, large encampments. In Los Angeles, Mayor Bass, my friend who's tackling this head-on, she's starting with three major areas of impaction in the city of Los Angeles. And of course, there are so many more. Our agreement says that within six months, we're going to get to 20 encampments a month and to be helping people in a humane way. So during the storm, I know we had DCR folks out there. I know that the county has people out there as well. But the opportunity, the challenge, and frankly, the responsibility is to make sure that we have in place the protocol that doesn't require us to scramble every time there's an emergency event, which is what we did over these last days. But to, but to be real clear, we're going to have dozens of trained people out in the encampments, working with people to help, a- and the transportation. I want to thank Regional Transit, by the way, because they stepped up big time, Henry Lee and your team, to um, shuttle people from City Hall to our city and county sites. But so that it becomes a regular way of doing business and we're able to at least try to intervene with not dozens, but hundreds and thousands. And, and to apply that consistent outreach in the non-emergency situations as well so that we can actually help people get off the streets. I saw the beginnings of the potential, but we need much more coordination. And we need these identified protocols so that the community and the, and the advocates, and the activists, and the unsheltered population, and our entire community knows exactly how we're going to respond in an emergency, but also how we are intervening in these encampments in non-emergency situations and identify, for example, if it's X Street, that X Street, we're going to help clean it up in the right way by helping navigate people into housing to get the services they need. More communication, more transparency, more clear protocols so that we're not having to answer the same questions over and over again of what did you do? Or, or scramble to have to figure out what shelter to open in the hours before an emergency weather event. It's the beginning. We got a lot of work to do this year. Let's get at it. And by the way, the efforts we have made over these last six years have not been all for naught. I get the critic, and the criticism is correct because look how, loo- look how big it still is out there. But we've gotten, you know, uh, the Sac Steps Forward estimates that we've helped 17,000 people since 2017 go from unsheltered status to being housed in the city and county. So a lot of people, a lot of programs, a lot of investment that's actually gone to helping people get off the streets. And yet it's still bad. So we stay at it and we seek to do better. Ms. Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to echo something that you said that I think, you know, taking a step back, as we look at um, what emergency protocols do we have in place? And what did we learn from this that we can do better? Because one thing I do know is, like many of my colleagues, I visited, you know, our operation centers and saw firsthand many who had, you know, been working, one individual, three days straight before boss sent them home because they needed to get sleep, 12-hour days. We are in incredibly good hands because our staff have worked out the coordinations between smud, city, county, fire, police, other jurisdictions, um, to keep our city safe. Uh, and you know, I'm somebody who likes to see what happens and how it's happening. And I feel like, you said, Councilmember Jennings, we are in good hands. We have city staff that care with their entire heart on how we can keep this city surrounded by water, built on a floodplain, um, safe. So, uh, and all the volunteers, when I was driving around the streets, individuals picking up palm trees, uh, the fronds all over the road, um, so that cars can drive safely through. So those things need to be there, but I am, I am there on looking at what do we need to do of, as a city council, a download on emergency protocols. I am supportive of Councilmember Valenzuela's request on looking at when, um, if we need to clarify when respite centers open, if we have to look at, because Mother Nature seems to be inviting some pretty scary weather these past couple of years that we need to be able to address so it's not a, a scramble, so that city staff has clarity on when we should um, open these respite centers for safety and security because it is something that everybody deserves the opportunity to take that safe space. Um, my question is, is I know DCR and others are doing outreach. What are we getting in regards to whether people are taking a safe space and coming inside versus not going inside?
Excuse me, you cannot, Carly, you cannot yell out and you know that. Please finish, Councilmember Kaplan. Come on. Get through this and that. Go ahead. Yeah, okay, Carly. Go ahead, Lisa.
So, thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciate that. And I know our staff will get us a report on, on what they see because that, I know, comes back to us as to what's been down in the download. Uh, separately, on uh, the council member request logs, uh, I'd like to place a request to our city clerk that we publish a calendar of regular items that come before the city council. We know there's mid-year budget, there's budget, we have audits. There are certain things that we know come up regularly in the council. Um, and I think it would help myself as well as staff if we had, we knew in May and June that was passing the budget, what items? Um, because I know other jurisdictions do that. And I would like to see if that is something we can do as a city as well. And then I am very appreciative of our city manager and his push. And I'm supportive of doing a city council strategic plan of uh, looking at, we as a city council, since many of us are new and many were elected two years ago, what are issues that we identify as a city are priority? I'm sure we can all agree homelessness and our unhoused is a priority. And then once that strategic plan is adopted, my request is that we look at the appropriate times, maybe once a month at our 2:00 PM council meetings. And we hold those meetings in more of a workshop mode so we can dive deeply to figure out a path that we as a council agree on so that we are not hodgepodgeing and are able to provide clear direction to our city staff on the items that the council does agree on, um, what we uh, address as we go forward. And then, Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time, uh, I'd like to, you let me know when that is to adjourn this council mem- uh, council meeting.
That's okay. I know Councilmember Valenzuela also has an adjourned in memory. So when we get done, we'll go, we'll end with both of you to adjourn in. we'll go, we'll end with both of you to adjourn in respective memories, okay? Councilmember Liloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo my colleagues, I want to give a huge thank you to the city staff, and all the volunteers, and all the workers that were out there during this horrible weather. I also want to give a major thank you to SMUD, because they were definitely very active, very responsive. I know anytime I send an email, I got a response within minutes, so I do want to thank them for working around the clock to make sure that our residents get power, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Telemontes?
I just want to echo my colleagues, and I also support Councilmember Valenzuela's request, on thanking city staff for their hard work, working over 12-hour shifts at SMUD. I do have an ask, and I guess this would be for Shelley and the city manager, to prioritize the DCR director vacancy from Bridget Dean, as we move forward with these policies. I think that that role is going to be instrumental in how we shape it, so if we can backfill that position and prioritize it with human resources, that'd be great. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, mayor. Just three remarks first. I too also wanted to just take this moment to thank city staff, SMUD, RT, just for their work this weekend, to ensure that our city and our region can weather the storm. I appreciate Councilwoman Katie Vow as well as requests, and mayor, your point on ensuring to make sure that we have protocols in place, so we're not reactive to the storm, because we know that this won't be the last. And so it almost felt like it was a drill run, in making sure that we actually have protocols in place. The second piece I also just wanted to share was that this upcoming Monday, we will be celebrating the birthday of civil rights leader Martin Luther King across our nation, our city, and our neighborhoods, and really just commemorating the life and the work of Dr. King. As many of our community elders would say, you know, MLK is not a day off, but it's actually a day on. And I really just wanted to share some upcoming events that are happening in South Sacramento, in District 5 and District 8, the Blessed Child Association, I Am SAC Foundation, the ROES Family Creative Empowerment Center, will be hosting a community caravan at 10:00 AM at 1,000 Franklin Boulevard, so if you'd like to join us, and you're in the south area, at 9:00 AM, we're going to be getting ready in the south area to celebrate MLK. The event does start at 10 o'clock, but if you'd like to participate, join us at 9:00. So Team Heart and Hustle will be out there on Monday, and we hope to see you there. And then lastly, I just wanted to just let folks know that it is the new year, and starting Monday, January 23rd, the Monday after King's birthday, we're going to be launching our Mondays with My. Last year, almost every Monday at 9:00 AM at the Pennell Community Center, I've been walking with our amazing seniors in our community. Senior walks happen every Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, but I'm there every Monday, and we're launching the walks again this month, and just wanted to invite the community to join us. Our office will also be providing free shoes to our seniors who will be participating in the program, so just wanted to give a shout out to all the seniors that participated this year, and just really excited for 2023, and want to wish everyone who's tuned in to our city council meeting a happy new year. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let us end with the adjourned in memories. I know two colleagues want to adjourn in memory of some important sacramentons, and whoever wants to go first, you know, it's fine. Go ahead, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn in memory of an individual, Monty Maxwell. Monty, I had the honor of meeting over 20 years ago. He was an active father, community member, he was a loan officer, a business owner, a longtime football coach, he was on our Natomas Schools Foundation, and Monty was that individual. When you met, Monty saw you. He saw who you were. He wasn't the guy that just said, "How are you doing?", and accepted your answer. He would stop you, look at you, and say, "How you doing?". And I had the pleasure, when I was sworn in, of talking about him. I just didn't mention him by name. He was the guy that pulled me aside at a football game on the side and said, "Lisa, what are you doing? It's time for you to graduate from being a school board member for 20 years and run for city council. Our city needs you." This past week, our community lost Monte. He was 54, still has kids in high school, he's a grandpa, but most important, he was a family man. That was his pride and joy, his wife Jasmine, who, they knew each other in high school. These are kind of our unsung heroes that you don't see up here, but every day are doing the work in our community. Honestly, having been a school board member for 20 years, I just can't imagine not going to school events and not seeing Monte there and Monte involved. He has left a big hole in our heart, and I know that Councilwoman Telemontes has had the same pleasure as I have of knowing Monte, and I will pass it on to you.
Thank you. I want to say that he was loved, and he will be missed in the community. If you live in Natomas, you know him. You love him, and you care about him, and he was an amazing individual, and he'll be missed, and just adjourning this meeting in honor of him, and his family, and the legacy that he's going to leave behind.
Thank you both. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you. It is with great sadness, I'm going to try not to be the council member that breaks the record for how many times I tear up on this diet.
It's okay. It's genuine. Take your time.
So I'm adjourning this memory in honor of Travis Silkox, a neighbor of mine. She was a Boulevard Park community advocate, neighbor and friend, who passed away on Friday, unexpectedly. Travis's husband Preston told me that Travis always looked out for the underdog, and I can personally attest to that fact. This started at a young age in high school, when Travis actually protested the exclusion of some students from their graduation ceremony. She moved to Sacramento in the 80s and has been an active neighborhood meeting, oh, thank you, has been an active neighborhood leader to this day. She was part of advocating, actually, for the dump at 28th and C and B Street to become what's now Center Regional Park. She helped do the traffic study, and most recently, she actually worked with us on the D4 homelessness task force, volunteering her time and research to help us find a plan to end homelessness in our community. Outside of her city advocacy, Travis was active in efforts to end wars in Central America. She taught at UC Santa Cruz, Modesta Junior High, and Sacramento City College, where she advocated for affordable higher education. She was engaged in the Puente Program for many years, and mentored hundreds of first-generation students. I got many text messages over the weekend for folks asking to contribute and do whatever they could to honor her memory, folks who she still mentored to her last days. Beyond her engagements, Travis was a generous, joyful, and passionate person. She never shied away from speaking her mind, or of offering to put her time and energy into helping find solutions. She leaves behind her amazing mother and next-door neighbor, Betty, husband Preston, and many, many friends, and I'm honored to count myself among those who knew and loved her. Our D4 team has actually been considering creating a community award, where we could give something out to other residents to recognize their service, and with Travis's passing, someone I actually would have considered to give the first award to, I've decided to name that award in her honor, making it the Travis Silkox Community Service Award. We will open nominations for this award later this month, and hope that residents will nominate those who serve their community in her spirit. She was a very special lady, and she will be missed, and I hope that this small token of recognition from our office will keep her memory and spirit alive for many years to come. Thank you, mayor.
And it will, and it will. Thank you both, to all three council members, for remembering some really important sacramentons. In their memory, if there's nothing else to come before the council, we're adjourned.